Welcome everyone to the May twenty eighth, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Since tonight is our closest meeting to the Memorial Day holiday, after the Pledge of Allegiance, then we all remain standing for a moment of silence to honor the men and women that made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms that we have today. Pledge allegiance, we stand in the center of America, to the Republic for which it stands, on my extent, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will all remain standing? Will all remain standing? Thank you very much, everyone. At this time, our Vice Chair, Mr. Castle, would like to say a few words. Mr. Castle, sir, tell them around.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Memorial Day is held on the last Monday of May each year honoring the service men and women who lost their lives serving our country. It began right after Civil War in eighteen sixty-eight. This was originally called Declaration Day, days that families of Americans would decorate the graves of fallen soldiers. As citizens, we're called to observe Memorial Day and pray for peace. This is a solemn reminder of the cost of freedom and the liberties we often take for granted. Sadly, we as residents of Lower Southampton are not immune to the sorrow and tragedy that has touched our nation. A young man from Feasterville answered the call of duty to country. Today, he rests under the majestic goats of our Lady of Grace Cemetery on Lincoln Highway, just two miles from where you're sitting. He was a nineteen sixty-seven graduate of the Shammany High School, Private First Class George Huntsinger, who put his country over himself. Serving in Vietnam, he penned a letter home to mom and dad, and it read, "After I get home, if nothing else, I will have learned to appreciate life and how I have it." Three weeks later, Memorial Day had a new meeting for his mother and father. Sarah Joy Mitchell, from the Oakford section of Lower Southampton, one mile from here, excelled in field hockey and basketball and cross-country. Sarah, too, chose country over self. In two thousand thirteen, after graduating from the Shammany High School, Sarah attended Virginia Tech, studying biochemistry. She was a platoon leader for her ROTC group in college. In two thousand seventeen, after graduating, she was honored to be placed on the USS Jason Dunham, a guided missile destroyer, and was deployed to the Red Sea. On July eighth, two thousand eighteen, Memorial Day had a new meeting for her mom and dad.
A new meeting for her mom and dad, John and Betsy Mitchell. Mr. Chairman, we pray that we, as residents and citizens of this great country, that we never forget the cost of freedom and liberty, that we put aside the petty things in life that devour our time, filled with anger and bitterness, that we learn to appreciate life and how good we have it. For liberty and freedom was purchased for us by Private First Class George Huntsinger and Ensign Sarah Joy Mitchell with their lives. May they rest in peace, knowing that we will never forget.
Thank you.
Mr. Castle, as beautifully said, you can touch all of our hearts because we know the families of these people. And Mrs. Bowman, thank you for taking over for that. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to announce that unfortunately, I was not able to make the workshop tonight due to the fact that my youngest daughter had an award ceremony at Poquasum. Lieutenant Scott is calling in tonight for Chief Criminal. Always good to see you, Lieutenant. And Head of Zoning Department, Mike Italia, will be zooming in this evening. Mike, can you hear us? Clear. Thank you. The Board of Supervisors held an executive session at five thirty where personnel and possible litigation was discussed. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop at six thirty. Mr. Castle, sir, if you wouldn't mind discussing the workshop topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed the Saint George Orthodox Church on Philmon Avenue, their proposed building. We reviewed the consent agenda items. We discussed cabling agenda item number two. We discussed the Dolphin Park change order. We're at two items for that tonight. We discussed the RDA grant for Brownville Road. We discussed Representative Hogan's request to use ball fields for educational programs. Engineer Everett's discussed the super grant application. Our Finance Director, Nick Ryan, discussed a police pension audit that is coming up, and he discussed the fire company tax rebates. Our Public Works Director, Rich Coppins, discussed the jet truck repair and pumping station repair. And our zoning officer, Mike Italia, discussed some new businesses that are coming into town in the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, for your hand on that. We appreciate it. Now, at this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Public comment is for non-agenda items. If you were here for an agenda item, we will give you time to talk as we get to that agenda item. Please state your name, address. You put your name in the logbook, and there's always a three-minute time limit.
Hi, my name is Glenn Stevens. I live at three, four, five East Mary Lavine. And it is that location, that address, where Mr. Italia stole my property and gave it to my neighbor. My neighbor proceeded to destroy it with a sledgehammer. The solicitor, Mr. Dillon, says on multiple occasions and confirmed it that Mike Italia does not have the authority to allow my neighbor to destroy my property. Let me say that again. Mr. Italia does not have the authority to allow my neighbor to destroy my property. I don't know why Mr. Italia would abuse his authority like that to do a person of the township harm, but there's no doubt he did. I've asked the, all the board members to look at the police video, the body cam, when I called the police officer to come and stop this man from destroying my property, and the, the, um, the board has declined looking at it. They would, they would rather be intentionally ignorant of Mike Italia's crimes against the citizens. So, I, I recently went to the police. They have a thing called a right to know, and I requested my particular, um, police report from that day. Well, that's a mistake. You don't have a right to know. You have a right to make a request, but they don't, they have the right to deny your request. So, really, the right to know is kind of a misnomer, isn't it? My plan was to come here with, and, and read to you all, in the police officer's words, why he did not protect and serve my property. The reason is because Mike Italia told him not to. Like I said, that, that I have my own video footage where you could see this goon smashing on my property. And when the policeman walked up, he said nothing but, "Call Mike Italia." Call Mike Italia. So it's obvious to me that Mike Italia gave him permission, permission that Mr., is Mr. Dillon wrong? Is he in that? So his statement is truthful? He does not have the authority?
We'll let Mr. Dillon respond.
Mr. Dillon, were you lying when you said that, sir?
Lying?
Do you want me to repeat the?
I gave an opinion, sir, and I stand by that opinion.
So, have you told, I'm gonna repeat it twice every time, sir. Because that's the reason I'm here. Mike Italia did something he did not have the authority to do, which worked to my detriment. My property was destroyed because he abused his authority, authority he never had. What he did was abuse, abuse his power. He has acquired power and friends throughout the township, which led him to believe that he can get away with anything.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for listening. Mike Italia's dangerous man.
Anybody else out there tonight for public comment, non-agenda items? Right. See, again, public comment is closed. As we move on to the consent agenda, line item one, A, approval of minutes, May fourteen, twenty twenty-five. B, approval of accounts payable, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. And C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Sharon.
My motion is, do we have a second?
Second.
I see any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Tensions? Motion carried. Line item two, consider plan revision for Kennedy Ford, five thirty-seven Bustleton Pike, Feasterville, PA. The applicant has nothing to act on at this time, and it's still working through the process of it. So we will be moving on. If the board would allow, if we could do a little change in the order here, and since line item two is no longer on our agenda, could we move up?
Can I interject for one second?
Sure.
Can I just make a small comment on one of the?
Sure.
I responded to our, uh, engineer on it, as well as, uh, I believe you. When this item, or if this item comes back to us, I would just hope that they would take the initiative to contact the neighbors that was affected, and so we could get a, an understanding that, that if it meets their, their approval. I'll just hope that they, uh, that we reach out to Kennedy's family, whoever's representing them, and make sure that before they come back with this motion, they, they made that outreach.
All right. We can, uh, I'll reach out to Mr. Roberts. We can go over the details and go from there. Thank you, thank you very much. But once again, if we can switch around line item five and move that up, if the board wouldn't allow or wouldn't have an issue with?
You'll be fine.
With authority? Okay. All right, then. So line item two, which on the agenda is line item five, consider authorizing the township manager to sign contract with Portnoy Law Associates. Mr. Gallow, sir, if you could give us a little brief description before we open up to possible discussion from the floor.
Sure, Board Chair. Uh, this basically pertains to the rental state taxes and other potential municipal claims like trash fees and sewer fees. In the previous meetings, we had the Portnoy Associates attorney come by, give a brief description of the fines, the penalties, the fees, and the process, and that was provided. But that's all I have for tonight. This will just be allowing you to sign on the contract, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallow, for that. This is something that the board has discussed in the past, but we welcome comment from the public. If anybody would like to come up and discuss this.
Deborah Doniger, seven hundred Orchard Lane. I'm really opposed to Portnoy coming in and collecting the, um, I didn't realize that it was the sewer and trash fees, but I thought it was just for the township portion of the taxes. I brought my tax bill. I also happen to be a tax collector. So a lot of that.
How do you like it?
I had a meeting with tax collectors at Porter, and I've never heard anything so great about Portnoy. I did a little investigating myself. I pulled the contract from Had Barrow down, and I noticed that, well, as soon as Portnoy gets the file in their office, they slap a six hundred dollar fine right on top of that. Not a fine. It's, it's a hundred eighty dollars for, to file a lien, a hundred and thirty dollars for something else. It equals six hundred dollars. So on my tax bill, I don't think I'm getting special treatment because my township portion is three hundred and seven dollars. Now that's six hundred bucks right on top of that. Then they have an additional twenty-five dollar fee a month, plus, I think it's another seventy-five dollar fee every three months for filing and mailing. There's nothing Portnoy can do that the county can't. As a matter of fact, on the list of Portnoy fees at the bottom, it says that they have to have sheriffs go up your, your house. So now you're bringing a third, third-party collection agency into the township to confuse the residents. Not everybody. We have a handful of people that don't like to pay taxes. But the people that haven't paid their taxes, it's not because they don't want to. It's because they fell into a financial crisis, or someone died, or something happened to prevent them from paying their tax. I'm not advocating for people not paying their taxes, but I don't think slapping a three, a six hundred dollar fine on top of a three hundred dollar bill, and I have to pay that six hundred dollar fine before I even touch that tax debt, I think that's not conducive to getting these people back up and paying their bills on time. And that's, and on top of that, they don't have any good reviews at all. And once you weed out all the, "Why should it be in collections anyway?" reviews, they don't contact people, they don't return calls, they don't return emails. They return emails with standard emails, and then they're also told to contact their township. And, and that's, they have a standard script that they give, and the communication was the biggest part of it. That's all I have to say.
I have one question that you may or may not know. Speaking of county?
Yes.
Is there, is there an issue with the county doing it? Or are they, are they so backlog that it might take them three years to get to a case?
There is a tax collection law, so it's two years, and then you go to an upset sale and lose your property at Sheriff's level for the, the taxes, if you don't pass. But there's loopholes. There's things that people can do to, once you get up to the night before the upset sale, you can file bankruptcy, and then that goes away, because bankruptcy is, is, that stops everything. There's someone in the township who hasn't paid their taxes in a long time, and they get, they file bankruptcy once every other year, or they'll put a six-month sale contract on their ass. That also stops the sheriff's sale, the upset sale from happening, and then you, you start all over again. So there's legal loopholes that people who know what they're doing do. So if you want them to pay their taxes quicker, change the law.
Got you. All right. The board members have any questions from?
Along those lines. When I listened to the proposal, and they laid out differences between what, how the county will handle, how, how they will handle, the one thing that I thought was beneficial, of course, them telling us this, but was the fact that they may be able to actually recover funds before, you know, that happens, they declare mine bankruptcy or, or ghost show itself. We really don't want to take anyone's house. I mean, that's not our goal here, our goal here is to have, you know, homeowners being able to pay, pay their taxes. You did bring up one point that, that, that either I misunderstood or didn't hear correctly when we were interviewing the person from Portnoy, and I, I would like to get some more information on it. So, I, I'd be inclined, Chair, Mr. Chair, to ask you to table this item. It requires a motion. I'll put a motion on, and I'd like to talk with our administration a little bit further before, or bring this back to another work session. So just, just maybe. I, I'd like to make a, a motion because it's a table of the item regarding the tax collection. I ask for that.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? Motion carried and tabled. Thank you very much. Don't know. We appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Doniger, for coming up and educating the board a little bit. We also appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Line item three, consider taking a physician on the Saint George, Georgian Orthodox Church zoning hearing board application. Mr. Donner, sir, could you give people a little description on why we are here tonight?
I, yes, this matter is scheduled to go before the zoning hearing board, and there seems to be a great deal of interest in the application. I suggest to, I suggest to the board that you can make a motion to support, oppose, have the solicitor attend, or have the solicitor attend and get party status so you can participate in the litigation. So, uh, we had, we did this in the work session. We heard, we saw a brief presentation of what, what is proposed. I'm told, although I haven't reviewed the application, that the main variance being asked for is a tower exceeding the height requirements in our ordinance, approximately nine, ninety feet, as opposed to thirty-five allowed by the ordinance. The property is in a residential district, and, um, I know there's a lot of members from the church here. Could you raise your hands? How many? There are? Can we safely, at least thirty? Can we safely assume you're all supportive of the application? Is there anything anyone needs to say in addition to that? No, just in support. Okay. So you're all supportive of the application and encourage the board?
All right. And before we open the floor up to public comment, would the board like to discuss anything in regards to this application?
I, I think we should hear from the public version.
All right. So, as we had said earlier, we want everybody to speak. There isn't going to be a time limit tonight. Of such large crowds like this, we are going to set a one-hour time limit for public comment just for this agenda item. We ask for residents to come up first. Non-residents, if time allows, we will let you speak after, if time allows. Everybody will have a three-minute time limit, and you would come up, state your name, your address. Time allows, you can log it in the book. I know sometimes we, uh, you know, always enforce that. We have a lot of people here tonight. If anybody would like to come up and speak about this, we'd love to hear you.
We love it.
Any questions? Yes.
Could we limit it to those who have party status first? Let us go first that actually have party status.
You mean you attended the zoning here?
Start first. Yeah. Let, let those that have party status be able to speak first. Because there's a lot of people who are here who are not actually bordering the church property.
Hey, Frank?
Is that, you know?
Start, yeah. Because you were limiting it to an hour.
Listen, we understand that the people who are congregants are in support of the application. We understand there's in excess of thirty people. There's not much more they can say other than they support the application, so. So I want to hear from those who have a different position.
Exactly. That's my point.
Yes. So, residents first.
Yes.
If we could, uh, if we could invite the neighboring residents living in that area or outside of that area, please come up first.
May I sign up first?
All right.
Meeting board, neighbors, everybody out there. My name's Jake Warner, fifty-five, Quail Road, these are all fifty years now. I actually sat on the zoning hearing board in fact when this project first came to us. We did approve the project via usage and especially conditions. So with that being said, we weren't soft about it. They have not fulfilled their end. In zoning, you need to file for variances, which is a hardship. We spoke about the steeple tonight. That is not a hardship. That's self-inflicted. There was, there's no reason to grant variances for that. There's no reason to waste the zoning hearing board's time, the public's time and money on, on a motion that should not pass anyway. They're not good neighbors. They've not guided by, they've not done anything they promised to do in the past twelve years. You can look at the police reports. You can look at all the complaints that were filed with the board and, and the township building. There's a long list of things that have not been done that were promised to be done. Now they're asking for more variances to start a new project when they haven't even fulfilled the promise of the last project. I urge you strongly to not allow this to go forward. If you do, do not put your blessing on it. There's no reason and no good outcome for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. We appreciate it. You know, the residents would like to come up next and follow up?
Me? Yes, is anybody?
There's some less. Maybe they should call me.
No, the other side.
Other side, other side.
Yeah, they're still so, you know.
Yeah. Seeing now, the stars.
Good evening. My name is Melanie O'Brien.
I'm gonna like this phone, please.
My name's Melanie O'Brien, twenty-seven-year resident of Feasterville and neighbor to the congregation, seeking these variances. I went to the zoning code available on the Lower South website to find out the purposes. These are the reasons that I oppose the variances. Section twenty-seven, section one of three talks about the purpose of the zoning code, to regulate growth of the township, to lessen danger, danger and congestion of traffic on roads, to protect the natural environment, and to maintain and enhance the character of township neighborhoods. Among other things, it does provide for the use of land for commerce, industry, and institutions, as well as residents, but with reasonable overall community growth. Reasonable overall community growth. I do not feel that a ninety-five-foot structure plus a forty-foot structure is reasonable, or does it enhance our community? It's just too big a project for a small town like Feasterville. Happy for the church to be growing, to be vibrant. Feasterville is just too small. I appeal to this board and every member of the board, follow the code that we have, the consensus of the tax-paying neighbors, the residents, and to not allow these variances to pass. Thank you.
You feel out there to make your public comment?
And just to be clear, this board does not vote on the variances.
Michael O'Brien, three, 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 Skyline Drive. I oppose the variance of the video we saw earlier at the meeting with the trees and blocking everything. Forty-foot arcades aren't unblocked, and ninety-foot structure from the neighbors. It's just too close. And as far as the structure of the building that they're following their church five walls, which I understand, that's another reason that if that they're using the smallest one and they have to squeeze it in there, this is not the right piece of land to do that on. You know, what happens, the church is growing, what's going to happen after that? Where's the park going to go? It's just too small a piece of land to put that kind of structure and, and affect all the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was a Republican comment?
Anybody want?
You're, you're, you're next on the list, man. Well, I just wanted to put my taste around. Six. So, hey, don't. Lee Williams, three forty-eights, Skyline Drive. I wrote, wrote it down so I don't get confused. Sorry, first attempt at this. Good evening, neighbors, members of the board. As a multi-combat veteran in different combat zones, I found to, I fought to protect freedom we all enjoy, including the right to worship, but I also fought for peace, safety, stability. The very thing this neighborhood stands for, the proposed construction threatens that balance. It's too big, too disruptive, and simply not fit for our community. First, let us reflect on what makes our neighborhoods so special. Our streets are lined with green, spacious space, spots, historic homes, and quite charm, the quiet charm that fosters a sense of peace and togetherness. The tranquility, tranquil environment is a rare treasure in today's fast-paced world. A haven where families, retirees, and young professionals alike can enjoy calm balance of lifestyle, including large-scale construction projects such as the church risk disturbing that disarming. The construction process itself would bring noise, heavy machinery, and increased traffic, potentially lasting months or even years. This could disturb the very. This could disturb the very tranquility that defines our community and makes it a sanctuary for so many. Sorry, beyond the construction phase, a church would likely alter the daily rhythm of our neighborhood. Place of worship, while meaningful, often attracts significant crowds, particularly during service events or holidays. This could lead to increased traffic congestion, parking challenges, and noises. Especially on weekends, when many of us cherish the quiet for a family time to relax. Our narrow streets are limited parking, are not designed to accommodate large influxes of visitors. And sh- strain on our infrastructure could diminish the quality of life we currently enjoy. Additionally, we must consider the environment and, and environmental impacts. Our neighborhood is home to beautiful green space, mature trees, and local wildlife that contributes to. Its aesthetic and ecological value. Clearing land for, clearing land for a church and its associated facilities such as a parking lot. Or additional buildings could disrupt this delicate ecosystem. Loss of greenery or natural habitats would not only affect the beauty of our surroundings. But also the air quality and biodiversity that we cherish. Preserving our environment is a responsibility we owe to ourselves, our children, and our future. Another important consideration is diversity and the in- inclusion of our neighborhood. Our community is a vibrant tapestry of people from different backgrounds, beliefs, and walks of life. While a church may serve one group's spiritual needs, it could unintentionally create a sense of divisions. Or exclusion for those who cannot share that same faith, our neighborhood thrives on its uh, inclusion. Where no single situation dominates the culture or social landscape. Finally, let us think about the long-term vision for our neighborhood, property values which many of us rely on as homeowners. Could be affected by the introduction of large institutional buildings. Studies have shown that non-residential development in residential areas can sometimes deter. Deter prospective buyers who seek the quiet, family-friendly atmosphere our neighborhood provides. By preserving the residential character of our community, we protect not only our quality of life. But also the investments we made in our homes, in closing, I urge us to consider. Uh, the unique beauty, tranquility, and inclusion that define our neighborhood. While a church may bring benefit to some, the potential disruptions of our environment, infrastructure, and community. Cohesion outweighs the gains, let us work together to find alternative ways to strengthen our community. Let's preserve the heart of our neighborhood and keep the place we are proud of and to call home, thanks.
I thought I said you have to sit down.
Well, I just make sure you have the light on the microphone button on the.
You don't want to miss hand, the, the, the wire?
State your name, your address, please.
My name is Daniel Frye Ford, I'm at two oh six Dalton, I am behind the church property. Of course, um, you know what I'm here about, uh, I do have a number of concerns. A number of concerns expand to more of facts versus our emotions. And while we are all very emotional about it, the thing that we have, the things we have to look at. Is that we have stormwater runoff, Blessing Creek is at the bottom, the corner is a flood plain. Over the past week of rain, last week, their gravel driveway ended up on Philmont. It created a hump on Philmont, my neighbor was on his motorcycle and almost hit it, he didn't see, he saw it at the last moment. These are things I believe Nick said, is it Nick correct, or did I get your name wrong? Right, that he had mentioned that there are things that they didn't, they have not followed through on. I had read minutes and I've gone back and I looked at different things, but that stormwater runoff is, is huge. You know, you've had the gravel there, they mentioned putting down the stone, that it's supposed to absorb the groundwater. And it's supposed to go back into the ground, well, it didn't, it ran off into the street. And it took them a couple of days to clean it up, now there's a big giant mountain of gravel, stone sitting there. You want, you know, als- also of course, traffic and parking, it has been said that they have not been good neighbors. They have not spoken to any of us in any way, shape, or form to try and come up with a feasible idea, and it's true. If you're going to have that four, four foot, you know, forty foot wall, it's not, you've, you've got ninety-five feet. That's ten stories, think about it, cause it's going to be on a foundation. Ten stories, our houses are two stories, can you imagine having that overpowering? Now, some of the variances included cutting out the slope. Well, if you cut out the slope and we already have a problem with stormwater runoff, the Blessing Creek's right there. Then you're, we're going to have a serious problem, at one point, I believe. There was an issue about a fire in July twenty eighteen. I'm not sure what it was, it was twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen, but it was the same day that you guys had a meeting. And there was an issue with the fire trucks coming in, where's the fire lane going to be? How are they going to fit, if there's a fire, it's going to be outrageous. I can't even imagine putting an edifice of that enormity in that small area. It doesn't make sense to use that little box field, as it was, it's known. For this enormous edifice, you know, at the beginning, it was two thousand twenty-two square feet. Now it's two hundred and five thousand square feet, that's what I read in the legal notice that we receive. As, you know, the people that have party status, that is ridiculous. Could you imagine the base, really think about that? That property can't handle it, how would you build that into that slope that comes down? And the water's horrible, because we still get it into our, we're, you know, at the bottom of a hill. And we still get it even with a barrier there, we get water in phases.
In closing, please, we're just trying to keep our.
In closing, no church, cathedral, or cathedral has ever built to these enormous specifications. On anything except commercial property, this still our few zone, this is a neighborhood right there. It cannot handle the traffic overflow, it cannot handle the portion of the flood plain. And I believe that if anything, they should find an alternate use. As they've already been using with the kickbox fighting in the back. If, maybe they should just use it as a recreation.
We, we appreciate your time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but um, it's just ridiculous.
We appreciate you coming out, that'd be something. Name, your address, please.
Hi, my name's Shannon, and I live at three four eight Skyline Drive, um. Which is just steps away from where they're trying to build this church.
Your last name too, please.
Williams.
Williams, there.
I am here to say that I do not want a huge monstrosity of a church built in my backyard. This is a quiet residential area, and we are surrounded by homes, not high rises or massive structures. A ninety-five foot building with a forty-one foot bell tower does not belong here. It would completely overshadow our homes, bring noise traffic, and change to the character of our neighborhood. We're not against worship, we're against placing something this large and disruptive in the middle of a family-centered community. Please protect our neighborhood and say no, thank you.
Anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
You know, Chris Haley.
Green light, there you go, you got it.
Chris Haley, uh, three four eight Skyline Drive. Um, I had a, well, just few questions about, you know, them being in here since two thousand and sixteen. Um, with some of the zoning variances and, and, and uh, exceptions, they were granted, granted to them in two thousand and sixteen. My understanding, some of those waivers had expired, basically a five-year waiver, um, if they didn't do any kind of instruction or.
The waiver refers to the land development.
Land development, correct.
Well, this is not land development, this is.
It'll, it goes into, it goes into them not being good stewards of the neighborhood and of the township, is what it goes into. And, and if we want to go into that too, it's not good stewards of the township for, for party, or on, on um. Having events, I'm sure that you guys were well unaware of USC fighting. Okay, all the stuff they're doing in their house on, on Dalton Road, allegedly uh. Child daycare services, so I'm sure that's a non-zone for that. We have pictures, we have drone footage of that fight, all the cars parked on nine hard surfaces during that, every congregation, congregation. Cars parked on the race, parked on the road, none of them parked on. What I want to get at is, if those um, expired, have they been operating? That business from twenty-two to twenty-five without those exemptions granted? And they've, have they been op- operating that business out of their own free will, and without the townships either of them, enforcing any of these or any? Or enforcing anything laws for that church?
We can't answer that question.
I think I want to build a record, and if I, no, I'll do that, that's fine.
No, you have the zoning decisions, this is not the zoning hearing board. The waivers you're talking about have expired, you're correct. That whatever was, they did, land development was given has expired, we're now dealing with a new zoning application. That's what we're here for tonight.
I don't care about that, it's about them not being good stewards of the neighborhood. Everything that they want to do, they've just done on their own free will without anybody's approval or permission.
That's what you're here, you express your opinion, and I can express your opinion.
But in regards to Mr. Haley's, Haley, Haley's questions, any questions you do have, you know, we can get you in touch with the zoning officer. I would like to know some of these answers too, uh, so, you know, anything you need to, to find out about, you know, we will, we can get you those answers. Unfortunately, tonight, right now, is not the time, but, you know, reach out to me, I can give you my number. Uh, you'd also reset, reach out to Mike Gattai, he's head of zoning, and then we can try to get everything he asked me for. Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
Just, gee, if you're going to reach out to me, just send it via email, please, okay, put it in email, thanks.
Thank, thank you, Mike, for that, thank you, anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
Is that the house the church bought for?
Thank you, or?
Cause that, that's the house the church bought for?
Alright, we, we appreciate that, please.
Just, you know, ask it for a friend.
That's a cut of grass.
Everybody in the crowd, please, this time, all right, yeah.
Well, my family's from Georgia, I spent a lot of time in Georgia, I've not, I've seen nothing but beautiful churches. And blessings from the church in Georgia. I understand, they may say that there's a little bit of space, but I see plenty of space. And whatever problems there may be with flooding or. I know the church is willing to find a solution and fix everything that everybody around here is asking for to be fixed. Or whatever problems they may be, I just fully support God's plan, and I fully support the church, and by the church.
Thank you very much.
They haven't done it since two, in two thousand, since two thousand and six.
SCU too, we will get everybody, I think there's some business owners out there and perhaps that want to come up and speak, so. How are you, sir?
My name's Dick O'Gase, I live on thirty-two Bill Tribe, about a half a block from there. It's a small lot there, and it's great that there are churches and it's grown. But my feeling is, in how, another year or two, they're probably going to have to grow that area, might be better off looking otherwears. Other place goes parking, it's ridiculous down there, they put no parking signs on it. I, on a Sunday, I, I almost had an accident, somebody cutting out of their lot, cutting across the street. There's no parking anyways down there, cause there's all businesses at the bottom there, Philmont add. It's an odd lot, I mean, there, if they wanted to build what they want in their bell towers, thirty-five feet. Why do you go three times the amount? Um, the other thing I, I feel is. The parking's crazy, they're parking all over the lawn, they've lost their, whatever, stormwater runoff, storm be crazy. I mean, what they do, that, what these, what these would have to have them to, for all that water, for impervious services. They would dig up half of the hill and have to create some big water retention or underground water. Uh, stormwater runoff catch, but it's down there, Philmont add, dog road, the water just flies down there and washes out everything. The, it's always messed up, and where they're at, it's even worse, but. My feeling as a resident, I've been a resident here twenty-two years, um, there's a lot of people here for the church. And I would like to know if they live here, and if they don't, I don't think they should have this. And hopefully, yous will decide on not letting this happen, cause it's time to have that land.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Frank Ward, um, I own a business, I've been on Philmont Avenue for twenty-five years. Owned the property, I'm pretty much right on their, on the property, and uh. Since two thousand and thirteen, it's been an absolute nightmare for me to develop business with parking. They're constantly in my lot, they're, they're coming down the hill, smoking near my dumpster. And then they give me attitude, I've almost had altercations with three of them. Cause I tell them that there's no trespassing, you can't park or be here, and um. There's no respect, there's absolutely no respect, and you're supposed to be a church that's um, good people. And unfortunately, um, I've witnessed, uh, that's not true, so um. I don't see this working out, I mean, I, I don't live there, I don't have to have a business here. I can go in any townships and have a business, what I like to do here, I grew up not far from here in the sixties. And, you know. For me to operate a twenty-four hour business with this church and the parking that goes on, especially on Sundays, it's almost impossible. So, you're, you're kind of handcuffing me, you know, by letting them even be here, number one, with the church. And then moving forward with this, you know, next project, it's definitely going to affect me even more. So, um, I hope everybody disapproves of this whole thing, because. Stormwater, like that gentleman just said, is a huge problem, I don't see that they work it at all. That's this, the, the storm lines down below are too small, they're caked and filled with stone. Nobody cleans them, I know it's a state road, but where's the township ones? You know, call the state, get the roads cleaned, you know, there's stone flying down there, pretty much on heavy, heavy rainstorm. And I've been flooded, okay, I had to do multiple adjustments in my building in order to stop the flooding. So, I hear nothing out of them, they're very disrespectful as people. And I'm very unhappy, and for twelve years, thirteen years, it's been a nightmare since they came in. Mr. Fox, God bless him, he was a good guy, I regret not buying that place. So that I would have control of it, but it is what it is now, and, you know, I just hope that everything gets not approved, thank you.
I live at three two five Skyline Drive, and.
State your name too, please.
Oh, Seagull Life.
Thank you.
And I just want to oppose the tower, I, I live directly across from the property, and someone will walk out my front door every morning. It's there to, you know, this massive structure in our little panel, if it doesn't belong there, uh, it shouldn't be approved.
Thank you very much. Republic comment. Right, ladies first, absolutely.
Hello, hi, my name is Maya F, and I live on three four six Skyline Drive. Um, my backyard goes directly to the church. Um my backyard goes directly to the church. I have sat and listened to everyone, and I agree with almost everything people have said. My main main concern is I do not want to be. Out in my backyard with this huge structure where, you know, I work all week. My weekends are my weekends, I'm gonna sit in my yard, I'm gonna drink my coffee, I wanna have my kids play in the yard, I wanna have my family over. And not to hear bells ringing, I, you know, I think it's wonderful that they're growing, but. I just oppose for it to be in our neighborhood, and that structure is humongous and that's small speed. So I just want to say that I oppose this structure. And I hope that you guys understand that and favor with the residents here, thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Shoswili, I don't live like uh in in front of the church, but I'm three minutes away from it.
No.
What is your address, ma'am, do you live in Lower Southampton?
Yes, yes.
You have to state your address.
Everybody, please state your address, please.
Thirty three North Westview Avenue. Yes, it is, uh that I actually moved in Fitzgerald, you know, for a reason, like I lived in New Jersey for fifteen years. And because of this church, I moved here like two years ago, I'm a musician um. And I have um I'm directing the choir in the church. And it's really important, and all I've heard today, the complaints is because our community is growing. And I think it's actually a solution for all the complaints and um like. Taking care of the parking and building a bigger building actually will help to solve the situation. So I don't think you're against us, if you think like logically, it's gonna. I don't know, make your life easier, I would say, and um. And about the building like um big high building that everyone's like. So, okay, I'm gonna understand why the hype matters, first of all, uh Fitzgerald.
Everybody, please, everybody, this every time to talk, okay, people have, when people come up to where they are, it's their time to talk, it's not anybody from the crowd.
I'm not sure if you listen to the presentation. I'm not sure if you listen to the presentation, which which.
If you can address us, ma'am, please, not not the crowd.
I don't know, like, they're not letting me talk, so it's like, can you please let me? So it's it's a historic building, it's very beautiful, and I know that people are traveling around the world to visit special places like this. And Fitzgerald is uh full of what, gas stations and what's not fast food. And it's gonna beautify, it's gonna be an asset to me, it's an asset for uh our community, and um. Um I don't, I don't see anything bad about it, and they won't take like crowd and the noise and everything, as I said, it's gonna. Actually solve the problem, to me, that's the best solution, and uh. I don't know, this country is allowing, well, I'm I'm not gonna talk about religious religions and stuff like that, but. Um we are growing, and I don't think there's anything bad about. Just getting permission from the township to beautify the township, and I don't know. And you're welcome though, first of all.
Look, I want to address the crowd, you said.
And yes, and this is the plug was also mentioned, and I think that will also take care of that, because everything will go by professionals, right, so.
We're all here, everybody's having a. On the inside or the other, let the person speak. Everybody that wants their three minutes are gonna get their three minutes, okay, there's no reason to have arguments or shouting out. People aren't entitled to their opinions, that's what we do in this country, eat the bait, we're having a debate tonight. Everybody speaks their mind, there's no reason for hostilities, I understand everybody is passionate about it on their side of the issue. But screaming at each other isn't helping the issue, so please, please try to exercise a little bit of the form, because I want to hear whoever.
Yes, I heard the disrespect and uh like people were saying how disrespectful we are, and they didn't even allow me to say like. One word and one like one minute, thank you so much.
How you doing, sir?
Um my name is U N D, I live uh not directly in the neighborhood, but I'm about five minutes away, I go to church all the time, dressed. Seven three three Bridge Road, so I don't really have a speech or anything, I'd love to say. Um about the gravel falling down, this very next day after a few hours, Bishop direct around the shop and bring bring it back up. Um about people being disrespectful, people go to church, not as perfect people, they go to church because they are like that. To fix themselves, and you guys know this, for all people at the end of the day, and um. Yeah, I don't really have much say, everything is gonna be fixed, it's not done by neurons, everything's gonna be done professionally, obviously with your master's permission. And just, they're talking about things that are gonna be inconvenient to them, and I very, I do understand that, I really do understand that. But the thing is, I came to this country when I was five, I was born in Georgia, and I was, when I was seven years old, I came to Philadelphia and I met. Bishop Saba, at the time, he was just a father, uh Father Saba, and. I was blessed in order to kill a man, because of the small community we had, I was able to maintain my language. Now I speak fluent English and my own my own uh language, and nowadays what I see is. I go to church on special events the most important days, half the people are cramped inside, and the other half of people are standing outside, so that means. Half the people are inside the tight space that can barely move, they're just trying to go to church on their own, they can't understand, a lot of them can't understand English. So that's the only place they can go, cramped inside, the other half are outside pouring the rain, so what do these people do, they resort to leaving. When they leave, okay, fine, they leave, but the issue is that is, they leave and they take their little children with them, children who are our future, okay? And these kids are not being afforded the same blessing and opportunity that I was, to be able to be raised here, maintain my language, my religion, my traditions. And this is an inconvenience to them, and I understand that, but everything will be done according to the code, right? With permissions, nothing is gonna be done horribly, and if there's people outside, like. They're going to be inside, the space is bigger, and just like, I don't know where they got the evidence, this land is small, this is enormous, the place is huge. It's not a small space at all whatsoever, if the property itself is bigger, there will be more people inside of the church, not bothering them. That's all I have to say, I just.
Hello, sir, I know you've been waiting patiently, we appreciate it, thank you.
I do.
Say your name, your address, please.
Uh my name is Kyle Hunter, just I live at five sixteen Stern River Road. Uh I wish I would have spoken first, because it must sound like a broken record. But uh thanks for, you know, taking the time to hear. Um since moving this community, my family and I, as well as our neighbors, have been repeatedly disrupted by the activities associated with church. The services often include outdoor gatherings late at night, um normally loud music and singing, you just gotta want to sing. Um to interfere with the sleep schedules of my two young children, and my elderly in-laws, one of them is currently undergoing treatment. In addition, the overflow of attendees has created serious parking issues. Cars frequently line the side streets, block drive lanes, um you know, you drive up, don't mind any time on Sunday, there's cones. Because of uh all the businesses that have overrun with that cars. This not only diminishes the character of the neighborhood, but it also contributes to increased rain and terror of our roads and infrastructure. All set ultimately falling off some tax fires. Uh furthermore, we've been called numerous times to address these disturbances. Um and while our local authorities do an excellent job, repeated calls for service like these. As part of emergency services, once again, with the taxpayers. Uh it's pointing to note, uh Saint George of Good Oxford Church is not a tax paying entity. Uh beyond its direct impact on my family's, these issues were encountered to the goals and values laid out in the township's master plans. This plan was carefully developed to protect the interest of super residents, maintain the character of the neighborhood. And ensure long term sustainability for Lower Southampton. The community vision of the master plan. Goals for preserving existing neighborhoods, maintaining the quaint character and functionality of our communities. Running a variance to allow construction of a ninety five foot cathedral. Which is totally against the ordinance, it was a clear departure from that vision. The master plan also addresses parking concerns, stating the township should avoid excessive amounts of black stuff due to increase stormwater runoff. And reduce green space. How how does this align with environmental considerations? Another part of the committee of the master plan is the protection and enhancement of quality of life. I I gotta ask, how will allowing this variance improve the quality of my life or any of the neighbors? From where it's been this far, it seems to do just the opposite. Goal five two of the master plan specifically calls for reducing traffic congestion to cut through traffic in our neighborhoods. We're already experiencing an uptick in such traffic, and building a larger facility with a larger capacity will certainly exacerbate the problem. Further straining local roads and emergency services. A conclusion, based on the disruptions we've already experienced and the clear misalignment with the goals set forth in the master plan. I strongly urge the board to reject this variance request, our community, safety and our quality of life must stay priority. Thanks for your time, we consider it a gift.
Steve Shivers, I live at two one two Dalton Road, um I am. Um I look from home every day, I look out my back window, across my garden. And if a structure was put up, it would be literally right in my, would be directly behind my house and do overpower. Everything, that's everything about the neighborhood, where, you know, where we are. Um as far as water runoff, um I put up a fence a couple of years ago, I have issues with it washing out already my fence. It doesn't matter what sort of engineering you do, you're gonna have issues with water runoff, because it's a hill. Gravity exists, it's gonna run off, it's gonna wash stuff out, um they have to repaint the bottom of the dome with multiple times a year. Because of the uh it washes out, it problems at the bottom, you'll drive around it because of the water, there's a lot of water. It all runs off, and with weather conditions, it's gonna either run off on a fill fill on, but it'll run down the dome. And it's gonna, you know, they paved the whole thing, there's no way to absorb water, it's gonna be an issue for every resident, and you're just gonna have to repaint dome. More often, it's it's not great, not good one.
I'm talking more of this, I live at three four little Skyline. Pretty much understand, also, I've been a church member uh since we worked this property from the city one. Um you know, this is a, this is a very, it was, it's a very big project, like we had to do a lot of hard work to. Clean up that property, as everybody knows, you know, back there was like a big forest, so it took a lot of work. And we got every single permit for the building to, you know, rebuild the old structure to. Put the foundation, to put the new roof, so anything and everything that we were required by the festival township, so we obtained every one of them. So then we hired the architect, engineer, so for the land, all of them. All these issues that neighbors are talking about right now, that makes sense, yes, it does create a problem at the moment. With the water runoff and all these other issues, but this is the project that will solve all of these problems, because. We have everything pre-approved, so we spent five years, three to five years to go through this entire process to get the. Talking and land land development approved, which we finally received the approval, then we had some delays, you know, with the COVID, then. Situation changed where we had to build a bigger uh bigger church because with immunity, more people came into the country. This became a lot smaller for us, so we had to either build a church or. Fix the parking first, but then fix the parking first, and after we had to redo the parking again, so. And everything is cost associated, so we got the church, it's not the business, it's a nonprofit, every single dollar is. It's being paid by the church members, so we had to do, like, fix the staff and. You know, first uh get the new zoning, get this uh bigger building approved, which. Everybody's afraid of this big building, big building, but this is a beautiful structure. That will make very nice for the entire neighborhood then, so what are we gonna do, it's a church, yes, today, like, we're gathering sometimes. Some after hour activities or like uh I hear the neighbor, uh I remember this, it's a little neighbor, right? We've been giving these many troubles sometimes, because the people, when they come to the church. So he lives right at the entrance, and some people that comes out of state. So they don't know where to park, and they park there, and they've been putting the security to there, almost not to park, with the practice of neighbor. Please don't park, that's what they want, don't park, but some people follow, some people don't follow. These new projects exactly solves the problems, for example, with the stickle in the warehouse, because the drive, driving completely gets cut out. And we have a lot of buffering all around the property, the new driver is putting uh the stormwater management and land development. All that's been pre-approved, we did township township engineers, and you know, many of you guys, the the people from the township came out. When we were, when we were going to the approvals, and everything is approved, subject to your approval, so basically you guys approved the project. But now we're just putting the bigger building, so all these issues that they were standing, the gravel is coming down, the water and the storm. This is the solution to all of this, only thing we're really asking of this public, the building that we were gonna build, it's bigger. And it's nicer, and it's taller, now, are we talking about ten story, this is a one story building.
If you could wrap it up, you are over three minutes already.
Thank you so much, basically, the only thing I will add to this is to really look into this and let the others see what we're trying to build. And they can they look at the ammunition, at least before they leave, then for for one minute, just to see, because some people didn't get a chance to see it. For one minute, and they just.
Now they, we won't be able to put that up this evening, sorry.
They say they don't know what we are, what they are, what we are asking, what permission we are asking.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. We are getting close to the one hour. I always say, ladies first.
Hello, everyone, uh hello, neighbors, uh my name is Anna, I'm sorry, not that tall. My name is Anna Probiton, um I live on forty seven fifteen Iroquois Avenue.
You are not a neighbor man, you are not a resident, Iroquois Avenue is Bensalem Township.
I know, I'm just talking, are we still residents?
We are. No, I I apologize, I don't know.
I'm sure, I thought we were just getting up, I apologize.
I don't know, I I apologize, I just, I want to keep it the residents first, and if you have time, after.
Sure, absolutely, and I just want to say that these these are all tribos city, um I am a first generation boy.
We are letting residents.
David Forbes, two oh six Dalton Road, okay, so. Uh look at our neighborhood, you see there's logans, there's ranch homes, there're levels, and the proposal here is to. Right next to all of that, probably ninety five foot cathedral with a forty one and a half foot bell tower. And I just think of, you know, you know, the old song from Sesame Street, one of these things is not much. So, I'm just gonna figure it is that. This is a proposal, we call it, we say, city sized commercial zone structure. Right next to a residential neighborhood, it's a bit of a mismatch, right, I mean. We have lived, many people have lived in this neighborhood for decades, I haven't, I just moved a few years ago, but we've all. Worked very hard to be able to afford to live in a neighborhood like this, to pay taxes, to pay the mortgage, the sewer bill. All of that, and we pay that premium to live in a certain kind of neighborhood. If we wanted to live in the shadow of city sized structures, we would live in the city, right? So. So, I I have no personal animus against the community, that they want to expand it. That they want to expand it, grow it. But at some point, it may come to realization that it just may. Outgrow. Our little modest town here. It's nothing against them. But if. This proposal were to be approved. And the structure would be to go up. This ninety-five foot behemoth. And and you know, I think it has something to do with that, the beauty of the structure, I mean. Statue of Liberty is a beautiful structure. I live in all of my backyard either, you know? So if this were to go forward and have this ninety-five foot cathedral looming over us all. To the residents. Of the neighborhood, it wouldn't be seen as this. Inspirational aspirational structure. It'd be seen as like this ninety-five foot middle finger to everything we search for to establish our community. That's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is, my name is Paul, I think I did three, four seconds. My property borders the church as well. Um, I don't wanna get all pointy, because it seems like there's some personal attacking and stuff going on. Um. But I do wanna get to the point. Some people are saying water could run off, that they're gonna fix the problem from runoff. Maybe that's true, maybe it's not. What is it gonna change is the size of the structure. Size of the structure is three times the legal amount that they're allowed to do. And no matter what runs off, what doesn't run off, and I'm sure the church will be beautiful, I'm sure it will be. And I'm happy for you. I am, seriously, I hear your story, I family like that too. And I wish you the best, I do. But. The noise and the structure, it's like overpower. And it's a little much, and I just think this plot of land, because it is. Still too small for the structure. And living there, being there, then. I really honestly genuinely wish them the best. I just don't think this is fit for our neighborhood. Thank you very much. I know the young lady back here has been waiting for quite some time. Are you a uh, Lower South Anthem resident?
Yes.
We we will allow.
Hi, my name is Andrea. I live at three oh one High Lane. We're so excited about the people talking in the neighborhoods and they were being disrespectful. And I wanna say, but uh, the people that are sitting here, one that actually we mentioned with respect. Are the ones who've been doing the sarcastic clubs and pull out charge the one day middle finger out of the. In the whole big neighborhood. And what I wanna say is, I'm eighteen years old, I moved here four years ago, so I know the both of those, both cultures. And I know, and I see people who've been born here and don't wanna have any part with it. And it really hurts me because it kinda gives me, I like the feeling of identity. When I come here and when I'm telling people I'm building out the wall there and I have like something different to tell them. And rather than just like the regular story that like that was something people announce. And I feel really hurt me when some people don't wanna do it, but they're a minority. I'm all Georgian, some who want to have this culture and keep them themselves. And one day, when they say that we don't do anything and like addressing issues, so like the flooding and the. Departing, that's because we're limited to what we have right now. And if you gave us the permission to build it. Cathedral, we would have a chance to have a good parking, resolve the issues. And then have a big cultural center where everyone can have a chance to keep us part of the self-identity. And I talked talked about this a couple of seconds ago. And if, all I wanted to say is, please take into consideration, even though I know uh, it hurt some so many people because. When I was with the service, I saw people parking the neighborhoods and it really hurt because. Like trespassing is not an option and I'm not supportive of it. But once we built the cathedral, well, once we built the church. Then we're gonna have a parking where we're gonna resolve all these issues and like what my friend said. It's not gonna be a problem anymore. So yeah, he was like, he was funny, he said, um, they're gonna make their lives easier by trusting the world. And techno, I don't know about the shattered because once I saw the east out of which the. Times tunnel is not shattering anything at all. So, um. Thank you.
Everybody out of the way, we have a pregnant woman coming up. Oh, congratulations on your love on the way.
Uh, my name is Linty Barrett, I live at forty-five Stanford Road. Uh, when I was looking for a house, I figured out, I actually wanted to move to Easterville because my girlfriend was on Eastside, if you. Skyline. Bro, whoa, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna speak today, but um. And it was the community feel that actually made me want to move to this community, uh. She moved here, I think like twelve years ago, and I was when I came out, I'm like, this is where we wanna be, this is where we wanna raise family. Five years ago, I was lucky enough to purchase a house in Easterville and well, my way to raising a family here. Uh. And I'm all for worship and. There's no reason that this town, there's a reason that this township has a great community feel, it's because of the laws. Um, to not exceed the thirty-five foot structures. I was interested in. To see what a ninety foot, ninety-five foot structure would look like and its height of the cathedral ceilings in thirty street station. That's how high this would be. It sounds like they are trying to squeeze into a parcel that's not big enough for their space, for their growing um, church. Especially since they've had to revise their plans within the past five years. Sounds like they should just look for a comm- uh, commercial space, but thank you for this.
It's close, we have, we have had our one hour time limit. At this time. Mr. Dylan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Great.
After hearing. All of the public comment. I'd like to make a motion. To have this solicitor participate in the zoning hearing board litigation. On the Saint George Georgian Orthodox Church applications. And to apply for party status on behalf of the township. And oppose the requested grant for relief.
This is voted to oppose and send. One of our solicitors, whether it was Mr. Dylan or somebody else, to oppose the application at the zoning board hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any discussion from the board?
I did, I just went out and took a. What comments, please, Mr. Solicitor, if I'm wrong, please correct me, um. The board's role here. Is not to decide what the zoning hearing board can do and not do. Zoning hearing board is their own entity. And has their own statutory requirements under the laws of Commonwealth Pennsylvania. The only step that we are taking here. Is to become an interested party in the zoning hearing. On behalf of the township. The zoning hearing board is still the final arbiter on this issue. So if the applicant. Continues to pursue. Through the zoning hearing board, that's who will be making a decision on the variance. And the only variance decision they'll be making is for the requirement for. The height. Uh, the excess height over thirty-five feet. And that's not for this board to do. Okay, after that is land development. If that was granted, goes forward, is land development. Land development is when they come back to the board and then the board has a say in land development. Their previous land development has expired, they didn't complete the first project. Okay, so all that land development that was done previously has nothing to do going forward. Okay, it's basically a new process. Okay, but they still retain the right to develop. Okay, and if they did not request variances, the need for variances. Okay, they would have the right to build. That doesn't mean they would pass land development, that just means they would have the right to build. Well, because they're requesting a variance, that's completely with our existing zoning code. Okay, they have to reappear in front of the zoning board. And the zoning board will make that the city. And then from there, township will will proceed with the procedure. We have voted that make sure that the interests of the township are being represented at the zoning. And when we say the interest of the township, what we mean is, is all the rules, regulations. And statutes and ordinances that this board has passed in the past. To be continually enforced. Is what we're, is what we're saying when we make, when we make that statement. Because don't people understand that this is not a finality process here. There are still steps that are legally available to the parties. Move forward and all the up and inside whether to exercise them or not. Well, thank you.
All right, any further discussion from the board? Saying none, all in favor?
Bye.
We have Mrs. Bowman is in favor of the opposition, Mr. Perrotto, I'm not quite sure you were in favor too. Mr. Ottinger, I believe was in opposition. Or in favor of sending somebody to oppose the uh. The zoning board.
It was an I vote. I.
I. Okay, so I is to support. Very good. Christopher Castle?
I voted I.
Okay, and I also vote I. So the motion does pass, thank you very much folks, and I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Whether you're pro or against it. Mr. Perrotto said, this is the country we live in. We we are peers, the servants, everybody. And unfortunately, we can't always make everybody happy, but we try. Thank you very much. Moving on to line item four is this time. Consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
They're gonna say that we're opposed to this. You know, it's talking like a tool.
So where are you from?
I'm like direct, directly across from. Like. You go around the bend before you go down the dome, like I'm like right there, I mean, are you starting?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, this is just, this position, we're supposed to file the accounts payable down for the team for seven years, but it hasn't expired. Uh, payroll records retained interest for seven years, bank statements, some checks, cash flow check to be for seven years. Cash receipts, uh, retained for three years, and annuals, basically retaining those for seven years. So we're looking for this motion of the filing. Filing, filing, say the department residents, twenty fourteen payroll, twenty fourteen accounts payable, twenty fourteen bank statements. Twenty sixteen cash receipts, twenty sixteen account payable, twenty sixteen library invoices, twenty seventeen library invoices. And twenty seventeen accounts payable, so we're looking for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gallus. The motion we read to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, this is the position of all filed, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Castle, any discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Bye.
Opposed. Stention of motion carried. Right, line item number five, we had already taken care of. Line item number six, consider authorizing payment number one to sport court of P A for the Dolphin Court. Reconstruction project, Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We're seeking authorization for payment number one to sport court P A for the Dolphin Courts basketball courts. Um, in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Everett. The motion we read to authorize payment number one to sport court of P A. For the Dolphin Court Reconstruction Project for the amount of nine three thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents. And authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Castle. Any special word? Saying none, all in favors?
Bye.
Opposed. Stention's. Motion carries. Line item number seven, consider authorizing change order for the Dolphin Basketball Court. Mr. Mohal, I said, well, sorry.
I'll actually take that.
All right, Mr. Everett.
Um, this is a miscommunication from my office. This was a change order that was actually working by the board uh, last month. Um, it's an admin that the change order needs to be signed by the township manager.
Okay. So the motion stayed the same as what I have in front of me, or?
Authorize the execution of.
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion as stated by our solicitor, Mr. Dunn. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all in favor?
Bye.
Opposed. Stention's. Motion carries. All right, line item number eight, consider approval of the cooperational agreement with the redevelopment authority for the Brownsville Road. Pedestrian improvements.
It's a cooperation agreement with redevelopment authority, it's the funding for that what we refer to as the shim project. Uh, the the Brownsville Road improvements. It's a grant of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we already have a grant. An agreement in place with Bensalem to share the costs of this project and uh, Mr. Everett's worked on original. Uh, the original set of plans and we have proceeded with that project. We have a motion to approve this cooperation.
The motion we read to approve the cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority for the Brownsville Road pedestrian improvements. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all in favor? Opposed. Stention's. Motion carries. Managers report, Mr. Gallus, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Just one item, again, sanitation rebate would be ending for expiring on the thirty-first. Uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven rebates as an issue, uh, that translates into the fifty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. The rebate is back to the citizen. That's all, Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallus. Everybody, ladies first, Mr. Bowman.
Um, I just wanna come. Thank everybody that came out and voiced their opinion. We can't be everywhere all the time, so it's important that we hear from the community and that you stay involved. Um, and when things like, you know, building in your community comes up. Educate yourselves, learn about projects, come to the meetings and participate. This is. Your township, this is your government. Government only works when we know what the residents. Want and how they feel and things that interest them and things that are bothering them and things that need improvement. If you see something um, that you think is not operating correctly. Please use our citizen reporting on our website portal, uh, that is up and running. And I just wanna remind everybody that, again, I know it's raining, but it is gonna be warm and sunny next week. And kids will be out playing, so please use caution when you're traveling in the neighborhoods, in your cars. Please obey our speed limits. And uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman. Perrotto, sir.
I also wanna thank everybody for coming out and participating. That was me a lot, it's just, this fell and said. Like, I just hope that everybody understands that this is a process. It's not a sprint, it's a marathon, so. If they take. Six months, three months, a year, two years. They have their rights. You residents have your rights. And the board has, has the right to make sure that the ordinances that we implemented or those that were forced to implement it are enforced. And that's basically what took place this evening. The next step is the zoning hearing board, as I explained, and uh, you know, I encourage you to attend those meetings. Those that are within, what's the limit of the project are notified. About the range of the three hundred square. Yeah, anybody who's in within the three hundred foot circles automatically notified.
I have a question.
And I wanna thank uh. All those uh, that served. As Mr. Castle, so eloquent, we. Spoke about in the beginning of the meeting. Wanna thank our one veteran that came off to the podium, who's, this is the first time public speaking, as he said. And I could, I could see that uh, you were nervous, but uh, you did a great job and you presented yourself well. Thank you all, and have a great evening. Thank you.
All right, am I gonna get a quick question?
Quick question. Uh, Miss Bowman said that you guys can't be anywhere at once, et cetera. Have, have you guys been out to look at the property?
Yes, many times.
You, okay, you've gone to their property. Have you, okay, you've gone to their property, but you haven't gone to our property.
Oh, I'm, I'm very familiar with your neighborhood.
Um, we have the Dudley Home. Um, we're down like right in the corner, we're next to Sumaya. And Steve, who came up, he's next to us.
Yeah.
Um, the reason why I say is that my, our trees are seventy feet high. If you look, come to our property at two oh six and look at the trees and think about that in conjunction with ninety five feet. You're going to be wondering, you'll, you'll think, you'll think about it, it gives you a different perspective.
We, we appreciate your comment, thank you.
I just wanted to, if you got to come look.
We have, we don't normally, I probably come at the end of the meeting.
Alright, my name's Nancy Mallory, I live in two eleven, two oh nine Dalton, across the street from this lady and this dude that was here. So I'm on the opposite side, directly from them, um, so my viewpoint is different as well, because I'm on the lower side of the street. My problem is not, I didn't see the presentation, so I'm not gonna speak about the church, because, um, I, it's, you know, if they're having a committee and that's fine. Putting that aside, the footprint that that area has with the concrete now is not enough for runoff on the board. Okay, there are no.
I don't want to interrupt you, but this is the argument.
Okay.
Exact argument that you want to make in front of the zoning hearing board.
I reported it to Mr. Kirk, twice, I just sent him pictures of the floods coming down, now where does it go to next? Because my, it took my own.
Zoning hearing board, they would take your my property as well?
Flooding?
The flooding?
You have to attend the hearing and express your opinion, that's, uh, she's got two issues.
Right.
One, she doesn't support the project. Right, you currently have a flooding problem.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and you want that addressed as well.
Well, it's what the church is going to do, is going to impact that part.
Well, we just forget about that for right now, I know it's important to you, but the question is, is you have a flooding problem now, okay? So that's what we, you need, need to address, now what's gonna happen two or three years from now, have you reached out to our, the township to ask them?
Yes, yes, she's notified, Mr. Kirk, we, we can follow, we can follow up with Mr. Kirk, Mr. Italia, you're listening right now, correct? Alright, thank you, Mr. Italia.
Yeah, what's her, what's her address?
Two oh nine, he knows me, Nancy, come out, I'm new to the neighborhood, but not new to the area.
Two oh nine, what? There's too many people talking, what was it? Okay, got it. Got it, thank you.
Yeah, those have all the cars on it.
Alright, we, we appreciate your time, we're gonna continue.
But the church, there are trees on. Philmon Avenue is another sucker, but the trees, you can't see the street signs where you're coming from, um, to St. Road. And there's always trash there, whenever there's something done, there is always trash, so it's, it needs to be cleaned up, that's right, it's not.
I got something. This whole church deal, I've been around long enough to live through it. Frank, I know exactly what's going on here.
Oh, yeah.
I've been on the front lines of this, and it's funny that I'm sitting up here on this now. So, this, I got one thing to say to this board about this whole thing. Bad decisions years ago leads to this today. Right, you make bad decisions, it affects things now, what, twelve or thirteen years down the road? So, it's, you know, this was a bad decision years ago by this board. To allow this.
Not this board.
This board of supervisors, not the current San Pimo. Okay, so, remember what you're doing up here, the thirteen years from now, the next board's gonna have to deal with it. So, have a good night.
Thank you very much. It's gonna be a hard one for you to, uh, talk.
No problem. Thank you very much, folks, for coming out, those who are watching at home, we all appreciate you attending and supporting your local government. Our Parks and Recreation has great programs all summer long. Please sign up for our emails, lower Southampton township dot O R G, you'll receive. Around one email a week, and there's a lot of program for little kids and grownups as well. Now, addressing this issue, I lived on Dalton Road, two two seven Dalton Road.
Is your own?
I knew the foxes when the foxes were there.
Yeah, the fox.
I know the smoke store when the smoke store was there. Yes.
I got the fish store.
I've patrolled this neighborhood for twenty five years. I, I know it intimately, and the board has spoken tonight. We're sending our solicitor to represent the board, and, and we heard everything that you say. You need to be involved in your community. By coming to meetings, and if you want to push a little bit further, run for office. So, you can hear people make comments and then act on them. Most of you won't be here next month or two weeks from now. Okay, come to your meetings, we feed off of what the residents are requesting or have complaints to, okay? Frank here is not in his head, he gets up here and, and lets us know when there's issues, and we deal with issues. But before last night, nobody was commenting, commenting about this. Now, I've been on the board here for four years, and we have addressed complaints with people on businesses on Philmon Avenue. So, we are aware of the problems, and we are, and we do it here. Mr. Chair? I don't have to remind you, our next meeting is June eleventh, so I will not.
June?
Did you say June or July?
June eleventh.
June eleventh.
Yeah, very good. As everything's already stated tonight. You guys, you know, if, if you guys continue with this, the zoning board meeting is the next one. Zoning hearing board meeting, Mike, when is the next, uh?
Uh, for the church, it'll be July twenty second.
July twenty second.
July twenty second, date certain.
We urge you guys to come back out to that too. And, uh, I think everything else has been said tonight, so at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion with a second, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much.